Planning Board hearing on the fourth, is it the fourteenth?
It's the tenth.
It's the tenth.
The year's the-
The tenth, I'm sorry. We're getting a little bit too casual with these planning board hearings I'm seeing on television. The first order of business, by the way, board members, is the election of the board members for the previous, for this coming year since the elections are over. If someone has a nomination, be more than happy to entertain it. Anybody have a nomination for Chair?
I'll make a nomination for David to remain as Chair.
Have a second? Second, Charlie. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you once again.
Low and round of support for you.
Yeah, yeah. Because no one else wants the headache, right? The, gonna need a motion for Vice Chair? Do we have a motion?
I'll nominate Mary.
Mary's gonna be nominated once again. Is there a second?
Second.
Go. No one wants these jobs, do they? All those in favor? Opposed? That's unanimous. Congratulations, Mary.
Okay.
Uh, the first order of business we have, Jerry Moody sent this down to me. There, the board needs to vote on, quickly, on this withdrawal of the appeal on behalf of the building committee. Jerry's indicated through letter that he's been duly authorized on behalf of the building committee to request approval to withdraw the variance application, underlying in the decision of the board dated November fifteenth, granted the variance release from the height and separation requirements of the bylaw. And he's asking that the board treat this letter as such a request through the building committee. If you remember, this was the variance that the board approved until town meeting turned around and voted the new school process in. So I would need to have a motion to withdraw.
I'll make a motion to withdraw. On behalf of the building committee.
Jerry will be filing that. A second?
Second.
Second by Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. That was a housekeeping issue. Any other members have anything in front of the board? You'll notice that Kelly has passed out the updated zoning bylaws. These are the ones that have been recently amended, and this is through February fourteenth, I mean, February tenth this year. So, members, please take a look at the new regs and the changes. They're identified in the, in the front sections, the first couple of pages, we have the changes in them. What we can do is Kelly's gone ahead and it looks like she's hole punched these, is that correct?
Yep.
Beautiful. So we can replace these with the old and remove the old from your books so that they don't get confused in certain decisions that we have to move forward through and address during the course of the year. There is some other correspondence here for me to review before I share. Looks like some case law. So I'll be reviewing that through the week and get copies back to you, and I've gotta get comments from Jerry concerning those. So we'll handle that. We have two hearings tonight. Does anybody have a conflict on the first hearing? That you're aware of? No one has a conflict on the first hearing? That's great. The second hearing, I know that I will need to abstain from that hearing. Anybody else need to abstain? Dave Pine will need to abstain, so the remaining members would be able to hear that. Mary will chair that. And with that, that being seven oh five, I would like the applicant Victor Valenti to please come forward. Peter from Gary and Hanlon. Peter, you can sit up while I read the notice, and then I'll take care of the application. This is on the application from Victor Valenti of thirty Whipplewell Lane, Milford, Mass. for a variance setback requirement of section two point four and/or two point five of the zoning bylaws in relation to a fifteen thousand square foot parcel of land, more or less, located on the easterly side of Whipplewell Lane, known and numbered as thirty-three Whipplewell Lane. The variance relief is sought in order to permit the construction of an additional garage bay to the existing single bay garage closer to the lot lands that is otherwise permitted in the zone. They placed a map up on the, gee, where's its color?
I do have some of the board wants to see.
Okay, yeah. Would you pass those out when I'm finished? That'd be great. I'm reviewing the application, and concerning the application, the applicant was asked what circumstances exist relating to the soil condition, shape, and topography of the subject premises, which do not generally affect other land in the zoning district, and the applicant states the original developer built the house not parallel to the street line, causing the back corner of the garage to be closer to the lot line than it normally would. Concerning the question is the variance were not granted, what hardship would be caused by the circumstances described? And the applicant states the owner of the house is aging and no longer able to clear snow and ice from his vehicles in the winter. Granting of this variance will allow him and his wife to park the vehicles out of the elements. And then concerning the question, please state, please state why the granting of the variance will not cause detrimental or substantial harm to the public good, and the applicant stated there'll be no additional runoff from the site. The neighborhood houses already have two car garages, and the natural implanted vegetation will remain between the two lots. With that in the notes, we do have a, a letter from Planning Board Chairman Marble Minini, and the Planning Board did review this on April eighth and voted favorable recommendation. See Town Planner Letter. And the Town Planner Letter indicates that the applicant requests a variance to allow single family dwelling on the subject property. The proposed twenty-four point four one foot by twelve foot addition will expand the existing single car attached garage to accommodate two cars and will be a thirteen point one foot from the side self property lines fifteen is required. All other zoning recommendations appear to be met. Therefore, he recommended a favorable report to be sent off to the ZBA as well. With that, Mr. Valenti, the floor is yours. Please give us an indication of what you're trying to do. Peter, if you've got some site plans, would love to see them.
I don't need, I don't need those.
I'm really impressed with the colored. Is that John? He must've got a new colored copy or up there at the company. Peter, the floor is yours. Just try to speak into the microphone. If you can, I think the TV station wants to be able to see that photo. You all set? Can you get that? All right, great. Thank you.
For the record, my name's Peter Lavoy. I work with Gary and Helenon. I'm here tonight with Victor Valenti, who's the owner of the house. The lot is located at thirty Whipplewell Lane, which is right here in the middle, this lot right here. It's fifteen thousand square feet, and it is in an RB zone. So within an RB zone, you need a fifteen foot side yard setback. Currently, we have twenty-five feet to the existing structure on the side where the addition is gonna go. Like you had mentioned, right now, we have a one car garage right here, and we have pavement right next door to the garage for where Victor parks his vehicle. I do have a picture of the house. Basically, inside that garage, he has a three foot stairway, and he also has his chimney in the garage. So it is, it is fourteen feet wide, but he only has eleven feet to actually get around and bring his car in. So that's the reason why he's, he is going with a twelve by twenty-four. He's trying to get as close as he can to that twenty-four foot wide so you can fit two cars within there comfortably and be able to walk around it. So that's the reason why it's a twelve by twenty-four. He, you know, he is getting older, and with the snow, he can't clean off the snow all the time, so he's having a hard time. So that's why he wants this additional space so that both vehicles can be parked in, in the garage. Also, this construction, if you looked at the photo, is a grass area. He's not taking down any trees, is another picture. There's no trees that are gonna be taken down. It's gonna basically be taking place right over existing driveway and a little bit of the grass lawn on the side. I mean, that's basically it.
About that getting older, I guess we're all getting older. But I'm, I'm older than I look. I'm seventy-five, and about ten years ago, I had a couple of stents put in, so it makes it kinda tough for me. I've lived there about thirty years, and shoveling the snow or blowing it wasn't terribly bad, but it's getting more and more. Now I have somebody plow it, but I can't get to that side. And I park my car there, and so when they can plow, they plow up to that, then I gotta go and clean the car off and do all that other stuff. It'd just be so easy, as I'm going in age, to then have a, a second car garage I can pull in. And like he said, I try desperately to get it within ten feet, but you can't. Everybody I talked to, all the contractors said you need twelve, eleven and a half minimum, but I said twelve, and that's basically it. So, here it is. Here I am. Thank you.
Anybody in the audience want to be heard on this application? If not, I'll turn it over to a board member. Charlie, I'll start with you. You have any questions?
No, I have no questions.
Joe?
Just one question. The existing garage, you have a door entrance into the house?
Into the house from the garage, yes.
Right, yeah. Are you gonna maintain a wall between these two garages, or are you taking down the wall?
Taking down the wall.
Okay. So you'll have access to both garages?
Have access to both sides, yes.
All right. Go further.
Brian?
No, I'm fine. I think it's great.
There?
Look, it's gonna have a tough job taking that wall down in between.
I, I just have one question. It says here you've got to put in a twelve foot addition. The application's indicating you've got a proposed twenty-four foot. What, what are you doing?
That's the back to front.
That's back to front.
Okay. All right, that's, that's what I assumed, but it didn't make a lot of sense here. Okay. I have no other questions. I'm good. You have the last word before we close the hearing. Take it under the advisement. You good to go? All right, we'll close the hearing, and if you guys wanna, if the board would like, why don't we vote on this now? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Mary. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Joe. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That's unanimous, as submitted. Thank you. Good luck. Enjoyed. You know the procedure, correct? You got a twenty day appeal period. I think you have to go back to the Planning Board though, right? You still have to go back to the Planning Board? You're already done? You're good? All right, so you've got a twenty day appeal period. If someone doesn't show up within twenty days, then you're good to go.
Somebody else said I gotta bring the subject to the deeds office of the business?
Yeah.
Yeah, it'll be recorded.
You gotta register with the Wester Registry of Deeds. Okay, you're welcome. One, two, three, four, five main members. Okay. Great, okay. All right, I'm signing this particular plan, both front and back, and dating them. I didn't have the right date as usual. Okay, with that being, the next hearing is on, the next hearing is Edmund Massabini. I'm gonna have to recuse myself. Mary will pick up the chair. So you'll have to handle the board members, the five remaining board members.
Okay.
Thank you.
He added, oh, yeah.
He added some syllable. Just wanted to make sure I wasn't losing my mind.
Okay, it'll be the five of us that'll be sitting on this. Okay, it being after seven-ten on April tenth, twenty-fourteen, on the application of Edmund Massabini of eight thirty-nine Washington Street, Holliston, Mass. for a special permit pursuant to section seven point five point four of the zoning bylaw in relation to a fifty-seven thousand thirty-one square foot, more or less, parcel of land on the northerly side of Main Street, known and numbered as Twenty-One Main Street, and currently owned by Cannons LLC in Houghton LLC of Milford. The special permit relief is sought to allow non-residential development resulting in more than fifty percent of the lot area being rented impervious for the otherwise use of the property. In the application, explain the reasons that you assert that the special permit is sought, special permit sought is in harmony with the general purpose intent to the zoning bylaw, in that the proposed use is allowed in the underlying zoning district, and that the overlay district bylaw allows an increase in impervious coverage of over fifty percent, subject to supporting documentation. The proposed use of the premises will not create undue traffic congestion or impair pedestrian safety, in that the proposed use of the site as a professional office is highly superior to the previous mixed use that was made up of several residential's and/or commercial properties that were poorly located with multiple curb cuts. The new use is by a well-designed site plan. The proposed use of the premises will not cause harm to the neighborhood or create a nuisance or hazard affecting the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. The proposed use is more appropriate to the neighborhood and protective of the environment. It has been designed with pedestrian and traffic safety in mind. The new use, by its careful design, will actually enhance the safety, health, and general welfare of the public. Planning Board meeting on April eighth, twenty, it should be twenty-fourteen. The Planning Board reviewed the petition listed above at its regular scheduled meeting of April eighth, twenty-fourteen, and recommends the following. Favorable recommendation, see Town Planner Letter. Dear Mr. Chairman, the applicant requests a ZBA special permit to construct a thirteen thousand three hundred twenty square foot commercial building and associated parking lots on the subject property. Section seven point five point four C of the zoning bylaw requires a special permit for non-residential development that results in more than fifty percent of the lot area being rendered impervious within the R dash one zoning district. The proposed development will result in seventy-nine percent of the property being impervious. However, the various stormwater treatment features, including two subsurface infiltrators, will adequately manage runoff and provide maximum infiltration. This satisfied the specific provisions of section seven point five point one C. In addition, the proposed development appears to meet the special permit conditions of section one point one zero of the zoning bylaw. Therefore, I recommend a favorable report be reported to the Zoning Board of Appeals. And the floor is yours. Attorney Fernandez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And for the record, my name is John Fernandez. I'm an attorney of a law office conveniently located directly across the street from this site. So I come here not just as counsel, but as an abutter as well. And I don't come here to object at the same time I come here to propose. I actually come here-
Interesting.
You win it, huh? I, I actually come here because I think it's, it's a really good proposal. You're all familiar with the site. It is the location of the old More Cones, the old, location of the old Speed Shop, and more buildings than I actually realized were on that site after twenty years being across as I watched them come down. I, I think there were something like seven buildings out there, Peter, on that one acre site in a real unusual configuration, and I swear, one of them was tucked behind another building such that I didn't even know it was there. But it, it, it had been in that same condition for ages and decades, certainly. It's located across, across the street from my office at the corner of Pond Street. It is located next to the bike trail on the left-hand side, as you see it, and the parking lot, the municipal parking lot that we often see services, the Sacred Heart Church, which is directly across the street at the Beach Street intersection. Mr. Massabini is a dentist, has been in the business since, I think, two thousand and two, has an office here in Milford on Main Street at two oh eight that he leases currently, and he also has an office in Holliston, very successful. He has looked around for some time for a location that he thinks serves his needs here in the community where he can expand his business in a way that is really for the long term for him. So his intention here in settling on this site is to really create a building and an environment that is for himself the majority of the office space he will occupy. He'll rent some of that office space until and unless he needs all of it for his own use, and in order to help support what is gonna be a significant couple of million dollar investment in this site, he proposes a one-story, what, what you will see is the sort of tee piece at the left-hand side that is longer front to back than it is side to side. The intention there is to seek a bank branch to come in and to support at that location. That would be his primary purpose in doing that, and you can see that there's a drive-thru to support that use. That would be what he'd really wanna do there. Of course, there could be other uses that would be there as well, but the primary use he's seeking is to try and secure a bank for that location to support the office as well. The only reason we're here, this is an absolute allowed use in the underlying district-
Can you shut the door, please?
This is an absolute allowed use in the underlying district, subject to site plan. And by the way, to the point of site plan, Peter has worked for quite a number of months with the Planning Department on this site, both in some hypothetical designs, and finally, as Mr. Massabini came to the table with an actual design, and Mr. Massabini has met with an architect and a builder to make sure that this design is something that he can put the building on, that he wants to be there. And they've worked on the parking locations, the cycling of traffic in and out, whether one of those you can see is a double entrance and one's a single, I think, exit, Peter, to the left by the bike trail, all to be consistent with the best safety of pedestrian and traffic in the area. So the only reason we're here is this is in the Water Resource Protection District, and the bylaw allows, in this zone, any underlying use, but if that non-residential use is gonna exceed fifty percent impervious, and this will, it'll be about seventy-nine percent impervious, then there must be presented to the board for consideration, and it has been reviewed by Vaughn, and it has been reviewed by Larry, is the recharge plan, the detention plan, and the maintenance plan. And they've approved those in making their recommendation for, to your board for approval, as well as for purposes of moving forward with site plan, which would follow this should, should they be successful this evening. This has been, by the way, reviewed by Conservation. They've made a determination that it is not within Wetlands Resource Protection Zone, and the, Peter is here to answer any questions relative to the recharge plan or the detention plan or the maintenance plan, all of which, as I say, have been reviewed. And we think that actually, not only is this in harmony with the bylaw because it's an allowed use underlying, and we've met these criteria, but when you think back to what had been out there, and what kind of recharge and detention was going on with those various uses, those being gone, and the site has been subject to a twenty-one E as well, which has, has come up adequate for purposes of this, that for purposes of what's going to happen here with the controls that Peter has designed in, this is going to be a much better use and design for purposes of protection of the Water Resource District at this location, and to the extent, in a CB zone, you could get some pretty intense commercial traffic uses, having a primarily office use here is gonna be much better for traffic, I think, in the area. And based upon the investment that Mr. Massabini wants to make in this, this is really gonna be, I think, a showcase building as people come around that corner and start to enter Main Street into Milford, and I think, in fact, it's, it's a benefit to the community. So Peter, if you wanna add anything to how the recharge or detention plan works on, on the plan itself, we can do that, and then answer any questions you might have.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay, I'm just gonna go through the drainage. So as you can see, you have the proposed building in the middle of the lot. We do have the main entrance. In this location here, you have a fifteen foot wide coming in and two tens leaving, a left and a right. And then we also have this one twelve foot lane, just to, it's an exit only. So we have two-way parking, basically from here all the way around to here. This is one way. This is your drive-through where the canopy for the bank is, and we have our stacking. And then this is the bypass lane. So basically, what happens is I have catch basins at each driveway. The driveway has a crown, so it's pushed towards the gutter, both here and over here. The, all the runoff is directed towards that catch basin there. So no water will be going into Main Street at all. The only, just a very, very small portion of it, just along the front, like maybe ten feet of the entrances. All the rest is grass. This is all gonna be landscaped. So the catch basins are gonna be collected, they're gonna have a four-foot sump, then they're gonna be directed to a drain manhole, which also has a sump, and then it's gonna be directed into this underground chamber that's located right here. Within that underground chamber, there is one row of that chamber, which is called an isolator row. So all silt and everything will get stuck in there, and then we did operation and maintenance plan that's part of the drainage analysis. So there is a schedule that all these water quality structures or catch basins, drain manholes, and detention, in this underground detention pond will have to be maintained on a regular basis. That's part of stormwater management. The, the site was designed for stormwater management. So one of the criteria in that is that no, you can't increase any runoff off-site. So all runoff from this site will stay on the site. There will be no discharge until you get to the hundred-year storm event. And then within the hundred-year storm event, the discharge, which is very minor, is out back in this location here where there's a settling pond. But the two-year, which is a lot, with the lower storm events, will not leave the site. They will stay inside because we have these two underground chambers that will recharge the runoff that is generated from the pavement. As well, we're taking the roof runoff, and it is also being discharged into both of the underground basins. These underground basins are basically made up of arch-shaped chambers, plastic chambers with crushed stone around them. That's basically it. That's the drainage analysis. Just wanna emphasize that there is no runoff going out onto Main Street. We are taking care of all the drainage onsite. We are recharging all, all of the runoff. And like I said, I did decrease the runoff in volume that is leaving the site. It's going into the ground instead of just sheet flow out to the bike path, out to the parking lot. So it's basically gonna be collected in this curbed area and then put, kinda forced into the ground. And it will be clean because we do have the stormwater maintenance plan in, in, it is in my drainage analysis, so that has to be followed. And there is spreadsheets that go through, and at particular times of the year, they have to be checked off and inspected.
So that, that's really it, in terms of the requirements of seven point five point four, I think C it is, that there be a recharge. So first, they put them in a different order, but in this system detains, you, you clean and recharge that, the system cleans and recharges it, and then you maintain that system, and through a plan that is approved by the Planning Board. And all of that is in the report that was provided, both to you and to the, to the Planning Board in that regard. So we'll take any questions, certainly.
Okay. Brian, I'll start at this end.
No questions.
John?
On the right side of the property, closest to the municipal lot, will you have your landscaped area? Will there be some type of buffer put up, greenery, or are you just gonna let the grass end and municipal parking lot stuff?
Well, we do have a landscape plan that there is proposed greenery along there.
Okay.
It's not just grass. We, we have a requirement that we have to go across the front of it. It's part of the planning, it's part of zoning, that we have to meet the number of plants and number of trees throughout the site.
All right.
That will be landscaped.
Okay.
Okay. Joe?
Excuse me. Regards the, I guess I'd call them retention tanks. Is that what it's, you call them?
The chambers, yep.
Now, those are enclosed tanks that are underground?
They are underground. They're under the pavement.
And then the water from them is what, processed or cleaned, or?
It goes through a process. It goes through the catch basins. It goes through the sumps. Then it goes through that isolator row, which has filter fabric over it, and by the time it gets to there, you have to remove eighty percent, you have to remove eighty percent of the total suspended solids, which is, which is part of stormwater management, and it is met. We remove ninety-one percent of total suspended solids, which is the silt and sand. The catch basins will have hoods on them, so that'll maintain, that'll keep the oil and gas out of the water. By the time it gets to the underground chambers, it's been ninety percent clean.
All right, and then from the underground chambers, it's-
Goes into the ground because it's a sandy, it's a very sandy material, and groundwater is very deep in that location.
And the point is to, because it's in the Water Resource Protection District, the point is to collect the water and put it back. That's where you want it, because it, it ultimately feeds-
I presume it's also, you don't want, where is it, the phosphorus?
Correct.
runoff that they're concerned about?
Right. We have to meet that, too, and the town engineer and I went over the drainage analysis.
All right. No more.
Charlie?
Yeah. The key to this is the rem-
The key to this is the removal of the silt on a regular maintenance basis.
Correct.
Now, is that done similar to a truck comes in, like a septic tank truck, and pumps it out into and takes it away from the site?
Well, they can do, they can use a clam shell with a, it's like a little crane, and it goes down, and it cleans out the catch basins and that drain manhole prior to the underground basin. The underground basin would have to be, they have observation ports along the top, so they have the ability to get a hose in there and to suck up the silt in those particular areas. And that's why you put the monitor wells or monitor manholes along that isolator row so you can get access to it. And in the drainage analysis, it is indicated how many times a year and when are the best times a year to do that, to clean that structure.
If it wasn't clean, what would happen?
Then it wouldn't work properly.
Okay. So, basically, if there was going to be another owner of this property, hopefully it isn't with that kind of an investment, does this system have to be attached to this property so that somebody has to do this, make sure that they?
I would think that the person buying this would want to know if they have underground chambers under the pavement, and it should be part of the, they should know what kind of operation and maintenance should be done.
Okay. And it's entirely up to the owner to do this and to make sure it's done correctly.
That is correct. And if it isn't maintained, then you will definitely have flooding across the municipal park, parking lot area, and then the field behind.
So, you'll? There will be a physical?
There will be a physical, yes. If it's not maintained, you'll see the back portion will be flooded, and the bike path will be on, you know.
So, that would alert authorities that something wasn't being followed.
That is correct.
And in terms of any future buyers, the whole purpose in part of the special permit is that this goes on to the title of the property, and anybody who wants to buy it is going to be alerted to the fact that there is a special permit for purposes of exactly this, and be driven to secure the resource plan and maintenance schedule.
Is there anyone here in the audience that wishes to speak on behalf of this matter? Okay. Anyone else have anything else to add, questions?
How often, how many times a year does it need to be cleaned out?
Twice a year.
Twice a year in order for it to function properly?
Correct.
Okay. I guess Attorney Fernandez, you have the last word.
Well, I appreciate your attentiveness and the appropriateness of the questions, and I hope we've answered them all. And I won't repeat myself. I just think this is in harmony with the purposes of the bylaw to both the underlying bylaw in terms of having a good use on this property and this particular bylaw in terms of wanting to make sure we detain and recharge clean water back into the site. It's a significant, significant improvement over the past design of this. Thank you.
Okay. We'll close the hearing, and we'll take the matter under advisement. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make the recommendations for approval.
Okay, so, motion by Joe. Seconded by Charlie.
Yep.
Okay, any?
I think for, we should have a condition with compliance with the maintenance schedule.
Okay.
Compliance with the water retention maintenance schedule and regular cleaning at least two times a year.
Okay, so, a condition will be that, how would you like this worded?
Owner shall comply with the water retention system, maintenance schedule, and complete cleanings at least two times per year.
Wait a minute, I write that fast. So, owner to comply with the water retention schedule?
I think it's water retention system, maintenance schedule.
System, maintenance, schedule. You want to say clean two times a year?
At least two times per year.
Should we clean at least two times a year? Okay. Anything else?
I should probably have it run with the land because this isn't a?
Okay, so, it'll run?
It's a permanent structure.
Land and structure?
No, I was just saying it's a permanent structure, so it should run with the land.
Okay, run with the land. Any other? Okay. And I guess we'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, it's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Very welcome.
Quite an investment coming from the board.
Okay. Good luck with things. Looking forward to seeing it.
Yeah.
All right. Is there any other, any other business this evening? Okay. If not, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion by Brian, seconded by John. Okay, thank you. Have a good evening, everyone.